I call the meeting of the Falmouth School Committee to order. Please join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I want to remind everybody that this meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as the chair, and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. Two quotes today. The first one is from John Wooden, who was longtime coach of the University of California, Los Angeles, they say, UCLA basketball team. Great recruiter, obviously, got himself Kareem Abdul-Jabbar and Bill Walton. "It's what you learn after you know it, all that counts." After you know it all, that counts. It's what you learn after you know it all that counts. The second one is from President Ronald Reagan, who said, "Live simply, love generously, care deeply, speak kindly, and leave the rest to God." All right, next item is public session, public comment. If anybody would like to make any public comments, please limit them to two minutes per individual. There'll be no debate or action taken on public comments. Committee will take items under advisement, or the individual may request an item to be placed on future agenda. Any public comment? Okay, moving along. I don't see Theodora here, so we'll move on from student advisory report. Next item on the agenda is here Athletic Coast League request by Mary Gans and Kathleen Burke. Mary and Kathleen, come on up, please.
Just turn this way.
Okay, sure, thank you. Theodora, actually, is, the girls hockey team is playing in their first tournament game tonight out in Long Meadow.
Wow.
Theodora wanted to come here, but her coach made her go there.
I bet. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you for having us. So this is something we have to do because right now Falmouth High School, for most of its sports, is a member of the Atlantic Coast League. And the current schools in the Atlantic Coast League, as you can see, are DY, Falmouth, Marshfield, Nauset, and Sandwich.
Mary, could you just give us a little background about how this kind of...
Yeah, that's coming, so you'll see. Yep. So I just want, these are the schools that are in the league, North and South, used to be in the league, but they left the league in 2014 to join the Patriot League. We need to seek the school committee's approval, which I know the agenda does not say act on tonight, so I know that you can't take a vote tonight, I understand that, but we can provide the presentation in any event. This comes about because the other four schools in the Atlantic Coast League are making their own request to leave that league and join the Cape and Islands League, but Marshfield is actually seeking to join another league closer to Marshfield and with schools closer to its size. It's quite a large school. So we, Kathleen and I, have been to many meetings to discuss this with athletic directors and principals from all of the schools, and we had a lot of questions, but at this point we really don't have a choice because the other schools are going. DY has already approved, has gotten its school committee approval. Nauset and Sandwich are in the process of getting it, and Marshfield is very much courting other leagues and other leagues are courting Marshfield. Martha's Vineyard and Barnstable are also, they're not in the ACL League right now, but they're seeking to join the Cape and Islands League and leave their league, so there's a lot of league movement coming around. And we've been a member of various leagues over the years, there's the history, and Kathleen can speak to this better than I can, but league changes just seem to occur over time for a variety of reasons. I don't know if you have any history on that that you want to share?
Generally, what determines your athletic league is the school enrollment and geography. And there's people in this room that remember when we were in the SMC, the Southeastern Conference. If you go to the fieldhouse, lots of banners from those years. And it was a large conference, and you would move up and down. We had the opportunity to move into the Old Colony League in 1990. I came here in 95, and we were still almost 1,600 students. That was a good fit for us. Barnstable was in the Old Colony League, the Quinseys were there, those trips to Quincy. So it was a large school league. As our enrollment dropped, we had the opportunity to join the Atlantic Coast League, which we went very happy in. When it was seven schools, when the Plymouths were involved, it was a good solid league, but when you get down to five schools, you get a very small league schedule, and now it's clear the other schools on the Cape want to actually expand the Cape and Island League. So this is kind of where we've been.
These are the current schools in the Cape and Islands League, so you can see there are many schools in that league already, and they very much would like other schools to join. They do have a little bit of fear of Falmouth and Barnstable because Falmouth isn't as big as Barnstable, but they view Falmouth as a very competitive school and are a little afraid to compete against us. But nonetheless, this league is very welcoming and wants the Atlantic Coast League schools to join if possible. Because of the various competitive natures of all the schools that are looking to go into the Cape and Islands League, they're thinking about proposing two divisions if all schools get the appropriate approvals. So we would be in Division One with Barnstable, DY, Martha's Vineyard, Nauset, and Sandwich, and the other schools would be in Division Two. The effective date of approval would not be at the earliest until the 2018-19 school year, so we're not talking about next fall, we're talking about two falls from now. The school committee approval is required because the Atlantic Coast League constitution actually requires that our request to leave the league be accompanied by a written endorsement from the Atlantic Coast League. As Kathleen and I said, the Atlantic Coast League supports this move. I mean, the schools are essentially saying, "We're leaving, so if you don't want to leave, you're going to have to find some league to join because you're going to be left high and dry by yourself." And the Cape and Islands League bylaws requires the Cape and Island Leagues to require, to approve the league change as well, and the Cape and Islands League supports this change. They are actually sort of courting everybody.
Yeah, they're welcoming us, but they really don't want to play us too much. You saw the big disparity in the size of the schools, but mirrored around in more detail. But we are competitive in some sports, certainly golf, cross-country, sometimes field hockey, volleyball, so we will schedule some contests with those smaller schools, but as one of the...
And yeah, one of the benefits, and you'll see it's in another slide, but it would be nice to play a lot of Cape Bay schools. I mean, it's nice just for, we are Cape, and I, you know, I went back and forth with it, we really don't have a choice, but I see a lot of benefits to it. In addition to the league approvals and school committee approvals, we also need district and MIA approvals. We're part of District C and D, and those districts are in support of it, and the MIA is as well, so long as no school is left without a league. So they're not going to approve the overall change if there's a school out there that doesn't have all the necessary pre-approvals up to that point.
And just one note, because you're going to read about it probably, Barnstable is looking to leave the Old Colony League, to move into the Cape and Islands. That will leave the Old Colony League with only two schools. Bridgewater, Rainham's looking to go someplace, which leaves only Dartmouth. So there are some more pieces that have to fit in here, but right now we're just focused on what's best for Falmouth and basically staying with the schools that we compete with. DY, Sandwich, Nauset, Falmouth is kind of the core.
These are the benefits, you know, geography, that really applies more to, you know, the other Cape schools. They really did not like traveling up to Marshfield. I mean, if you think about, you know, you're further out on the Cape and you're making that trek, and, but we had travel issues too with Marshfield games. But we will, as I said, be playing against Cape Bay schools. It will be a larger school, so we will get more league games. Right now, as Kathleen said, with just five schools in the Atlantic Coast League, we're looking to schedule, you know, non-league games all the time, and scheduling becomes a nightmare. And it's a more competitive environment for the schools that are in the league. We're losing Marshfield, which is a very competitive and great school to play against, but we're gaining Barnstable, which is similar in size to Marshfield. And there's a potential for future expansion to three divisions, which could mean other schools that join this and depending on where they fit in terms of enrollment. Kathleen can describe this, the no mandatory crossovers with the Division Two schools. One of the issues is if they don't want, if some of the smaller schools say, "I'm kind of afraid of Falmouth, I don't really want to play them," that they can't be mandated to play right now. That's under consideration. Competition is generally viewed as being stronger over the bridge, and getting back to travel with Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard in there will have some travel, you know, times there as well. So do you want to explain the mandatory crossover?
Well, just the long, you know, the long-term plan of this is if we can have a middle tier. Right now, there's the large schools, which we fall into Division One, and the smaller schools. If a couple more schools, Mashpee, Bourne, or even some of the schools in the smaller division move to a middle division, that's kind of the long-range plan. But for right now, it's Division One and Two, and you don't want to play a school that isn't a good matchup for you, yet in some sports, you can, you know, fill in your non-league schedule, so.
These are the teams and sports that are impacted. I only note this because we do have a girls' golf, the gymnastics team and our sailing team are actually in different leagues, but they are not impacted by this change at all. They will stay in the leagues that they're in. So these are the teams, these are the sports that are impacted. Boys and girls, ice hockey is boys and girls, basketball is boys and girls. So those are the, those are the sports that are all impacted. And like I said, because all the other schools are actively pursuing this, the Atlantic Coast League is essentially going to be obsolete, leaving Falmouth High School without a league unless we can obtain approval to join the Cape and Islands League as well. Do people have any questions?
Questions for Mary and Kathleen? Melissa?
I have a question. You said that nobody would be leaving until 2018-19. Is that all the other schools in the current leagues? So like, nobody's going to start to titrate in, I guess is what I'm trying to ask.
Well, part of it is, in the bylaws, it requires a two-year span after a vote that's approved to join a league. This actually would be a little less than the two-year span where the league has agreed to allow that so that everybody can start at the same time. I don't think that that would occur, but I haven't heard about that in any...
No, the MIA has the same rules, a two-year notification process. The clock actually started ticking for us last spring when we started discussions of this, but it's a two-year notification process to change your league unless the league that you're in would allow you to leave early, and that doesn't apply in this case.
So it's not like, for example, Marshfield and Nauset are going to, or sorry, DY and Marshfield are going to check out?
Oh, no. Right, no, and we've all talked about that at our meetings. We all know we're going to stick together until that day, yes.
Until 2018-19, okay.
The only exception would be Marshfield. Marshfield, whenever they can go, still complete the scheduling cycle, so we would not end up with holes. Marshfield would like to be in the Patriot League, that also applied to the Bay State League. It's a better fit for them in terms of travel, and Marshfield's close to 1,400 students.
Right, it's a big... Okay, thank you.
Other questions? John?
At my school, when I was in high school, actually went from the Boston District to the dual county league, and it wasn't really a big deal. It was actually kind of refreshing having the new competition and whatnot. Question though, with some of the ones that are the traditional rivals and have, like you said, maybe Marshfield or whatnot, is there ability to play non-league games too? To like, schedule like, one game?
Yeah, there's always an ability, depending on availability.
Right now, with a league of five, you only, you play people home and away, so you have eight league games. For the sports that you play 20 games in, like basketball and baseball, we're looking for 12 non-league games. It's much better if we have six schools in our division than we would have 10 league games, which is better. We were in much larger leagues. We hit nine or 10 schools in a league, and that's when you get locked out. That's when you don't have room to schedule people. This is a good balance. I think we've highlighted the pluses and the minuses and...
And the no choices.
I didn't, I'm saying we don't have another choice. We did look at other choices, just so you know, we did. We looked at trying to combine the ACL and the OCL, the South Coast Conference, if they had expanded, that's the Bourne, Old Rochester, Wareham direction. Dartmouth would love to be in that mix over that way. But right now, and again, for those of you that have, you know, been in Falmouth and watched this, this process, there will be, if this goes through, there will no longer be an Old Colony League, no longer be an Atlantic Coast League. The Eastern Athletic League, where Martha's Vineyard is, will no longer exist. And it is really a result of demographics. It's, you know, school sizes have changed so much. Ours is a great example of that. So I think what the leagues are doing is they're expanding and then dividing large, small, north, south. Dual County has two divisions, Bay State League has two divisions, and we may get to that point.
Yeah. Melissa, do you have a question?
I just was going to make a comment, just to echo John's comment on the refreshing change. I was at the high school when we went from S, remind me, what was it?
SMC, yes.
SM Street to the Old Colony. That was a big deal, and it was a nice refreshing change of venue, change of, you know, new blood, fresh, you know, eyes on things, and new competition, so I'm sort of excited for the kids. I think it's going to be, whatever it is, it's going to be exciting for them, so.
Phil, do you have a question?
Yeah, does this put a little pressure on then Mashpee and Bourne to look at this real quick?
They have looked at it, certainly a little bit. Mashpee's in the South Shore League, they have to go to Hull. I don't know how much longer Mashpee's going to continue. Hull, Abington, those schools, but they get a solid league schedule, and I think if you speak to Mashpee people, they like the athletic conference they're in right now, it'd be travel that might dictate it. And Bourne has been a longtime member of the South Coast League. But yeah, as this expands and there's a middle tier, it may become attractive to them.
Any other questions? Questions from the audience?
I, well, yes, please, thank you. I wanted to rehear, there is still a chance of games off Cape, because I know it's great to have games on Cape because of the travel, but knowing so many student athletes, those competitive games are still off Cape.
Yeah, there's still absolutely a chance for games, because we still won't have openings to, we'll have to schedule non-league team games, yes.
Probably half our schedule would be non-league. In a 20-game schedule, you'll get 10 league games. Yeah, no, you're right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So we don't have it on as act tonight. For our next meeting, we'll have a document with the appropriate language that you need for the, both to leave the league and to join the league?
I can, do you want me to submit that?
Sure.
I think what you said was that you needed some sort, so if you can provide us a draft of that for our consideration, both leaving and joining, we'll act on it next school committee meeting.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Next item on the agenda is to act to accept a donation of $1,000 from Teledyne Bentos.
Yes, in your packets, you should see a letter and a copy of the check from Teledyne Bentos for the remote operated vehicle team, and I recommend that you accept this donation.
Can I get a motion to accept the donated $1,000 from Teledyne Bentos?
I can make a motion to accept the donation of $1,000 from Teledyne, Karen Bentos.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Tell it, thank you, Teledyne.
Thank you very much.
I love having one of these every single meeting.
Yes.
Great.
Next item on the agenda is act on field trip request for the National Art Society to New York City.
This is Carrie Shanahan. She is the president of the National Art Honor Society, and no one else is here tonight, so you stepped up to present and asked for the school committee to act and approve this trip to New York.
Yep, so right now, we plan on having around 45 National Art Honor Society members going on this trip. We have one of the largest honor societies in the school, it's around 100 students, and with conflicts like sports and school and stuff like that, we usually get around half. So we would have five adult chaperones would be with us, and we leave on a bus at 6:00 AM, arrive around 11:00 at Times Square, and then from there, we'll walk to the Museum of Modern Art and visit that, and then we will continue on to Central Park and see the Met, have lunch, and spend our time there, see all the artwork, and then get back on the bus to get home to the high school around midnight. So, yeah, so it should be, I think, it's around $45 a student, $40, which we were able to decrease considerably because of all of the fundraising that we've done, so that was a really great opportunity for us.
Questions for Carrie?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. So it's a school day?
Yes.
So we have to make up all the stuff you missed?
Um, yeah, which is really very accommodating with us, though. We all get a form that we have to have each teacher sign off so that they know that we're leaving, and they usually always tell us what we're missing, and they're really very ideal, so.
Carrie?
You've had success in the past doing this. I was going to tell you, maybe mention that and sway the vote, I mean, right?
Yeah, yeah, I went last year, it was a lot of fun. It's an awesome opportunity. That was the first time I've ever been to New York City, so it was pretty cool.
Any other questions for Carrie?
I just have a comment. I would encourage to vote for it, but I have to abstain because my daughter's on the National Art Honor Society, so.
Okay. Can I get, any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve field trip request for the National Art Society to New York City?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Have a great trip.
Thanks for coming.
Well done.
Thank you.
Next item is to act on the proposed FY18 school budget.
Okay, I recommend that the school committee approve the FY18 budget in the amount of
Can I get a motion to approve the proposed FY18 school budget of the recommended amount? Any so motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions?
Has anything changed, or is everything exactly as we think? I just don't want, I just want to make sure nothing has changed since the last time we heard about it.
Everything is the same. I did talk about positions, and they may move around a little bit, but no.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Carrie?
And the only plus or minus would be grants, and Chapter 70?
No, it's really, would be entitlement grants, and we don't hear about that till July, August.
But there's no biggies.
We will, we will manage that.
And we don't know.
Right, we will manage that. Which is the way it always is?
Yeah.
Other questions?
We're still positive then on the HR situation?
Yes, I'm moving in that direction.
Excellent.
Yes.
Other questions? Discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the proposed FY18 school budget as proposed?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a lot of work.
Strong work.
Good budget season, thank you all.
Yes.
Thanks for your hard work on it, Patrick. All right, next item is to act on the 2017-2018 school calendar.
So in your packets, and you've talked about this a couple of times, you have the draft of the 2017-2018 calendar, and I would ask that you approve it as proposed.
Can I get a motion on that?
I can make a motion that we approve it, but I have a couple edits.
We need a motion before we can discuss.
Okay, I'll move that we approve it.
Okay, can I get a second on the, on the motion?
I'll second it so we can talk about it.
Discussion.
Okay, so on the list with all of the dates, in the top paragraph, in two places, it refers to, it's just a typo, it says 2016 instead of 2017, in the first line and then in the last line. And then on this one, the one that we all hang on our fridge, or at least I do, I love that the email addresses are down at the bottom for each school, because I think that that makes life a lot more simple, to have both the phone number and the email, but they're all kind of off. I don't know if we can make them line up, because right now, North, Falmouth, and T-Ticket are kind of lined up. If we can just...
It's a formatting issue, right?
Format that up a little bit better.
Other discussion points on the calendar? All in favor of the 2017-2018 school calendar as proposed?
Aye.
With edits.
I'm sorry?
With edits.
With the two edits on the second page, yes, from 2016 to 2017.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? School calendar passes. Great.
Could I just make a comment?
Please.
I noted in the Sandwich enterprise that Sandwich was considering starting before Labor Day next year, and I would just urge the calendar committee to look at the surrounding communities in the future.
Yes, good point, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is act on the 2017-2018 school choice seats. Think you wanted to start this with a video?
Yes, please. As you know, we do a little public service announcement each year, and so I thought we'd take a look at that before we had our conversation about approving the school choice.
I chose Falmouth High School because of the strong academics and because it's a Level One school.
I chose Falmouth High School because there's opportunities here that no other school could get.
I chose Falmouth High School because being a Clipper really does me one town, one family.
Across the Commonwealth, students are making Falmouth High School their choice. To learn more, visit falmouthps.org.
Very nice. Good job.
Nice work.
Is that Orion production?
That is a Ryan Webber production.
Good job, Ryan.
Yay!
All right.
So in your packets, if you take a look at the purple sheet, you will see the school choice numbers that we are proposing.
Can I get a motion to accept the school choice seats as proposed?
Make a motion to approve the school choice seats as proposed.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions? All in favor of approval of the school's school choice seats as proposed, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The choice seats passes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, routine business, approve the minutes from 2/14/17.
I just have a correction, but Sharon fixed it because she rocks.
Do you have an edit?
No, Sharon is a rock star, Sharon fixes them.
All right, great. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the February 14th, 2017 school committee meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I abstained since I wasn't here. Superintendent's briefing.
Okay, I do have some additions to my briefing that are not included in your packet, just a couple of things. On February 16th, 2017, I went to the Tri-Am National Music Art Society that inducted 23 new students, and that was really exciting. And I'll add that Stephanie Miles became an honorary member that night. And I just want to remind everyone that you all did get an email from Steve Edwards that listed all of the events in March, because as you know, that March is Music in Our Schools Month and Youth Art Month, and there's a lot going on, so I just want to make sure that you have that and you have all the dates of the different events in town. And then keep in mind that the science fair is this weekend, Saturday, March 4th, another big event, and the FEF dinner is... big event, and the FEF Dinner is Saturday night, March 4th, so a lot going on this weekend. I want to just let you know that over at the East Falmouth School, they have started a nurturing fathers program, which is really exciting. It's provided by the Neighborhood Support Coalition for Fathers, and it, they also provide childcare and dinner. And I do have flyers, if anybody would like a copy of that. The National Honor Society, the Science Honor Society, will be going over to visit the elementary schools to do some demonstrations for our kids, and I think that's a really exciting thing. They'll do demonstrations around air pressure, sound, and dry ice. So they'll be heading over to our elementary schools. And then in your packet, again, I added late a letter from the Cape Cod Foundation, and I will ask you in the future to accept the donation, but the Cape Cod Foundation has granted us $5,000 to support the Common Choice Program district-wide.
Great.
So those are just some highlights, I wanted to make sure you all knew.
Any questions for Nancy? Thank you, Nancy. Sonia, is there anything that you would like to highlight or expand upon from your report?
None of this time, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Sonia? Thank you, Sonia. Zach, is there anything that you would like to highlight from your report?
No, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Zach? Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Charles, is there anything that you would like to highlight from your report?
Not really, I would, I would just say with the approval of the school choice, the applications will be online on our website by the week's end. So probably tomorrow, could be definitely day after.
Oh, can I ask a question about that, actually?
Go ahead.
Where will the video be? Is that going to be on, where are we going to, where's it going to be shown?
Tomcast.
On, okay, awesome. I want to be able to see it on the website. It should be on the website. We'll be like on Facebook. Usually puts it right on the website. Okay, got it.
Great, excellent. Any questions for Charles? Thank you, Charles. Cindy, anything that you would like to highlight from your report?
No, but I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Cindy?
I like the pictures. I like diagrams.
No questions for Cindy? Patrick, anything that you would like to highlight from your report?
No, just thank everyone for their participation in getting the budget done.
Okay, I can't have a question, I'm going to ruin our, our role.
Go for it.
I'll take your question.
So, so my question is about the YMCA letter of intent. So I hadn't thought about it previously, but if someone, if we sign, and I might be way ahead of myself, and if that's true, then just tell me to wait. If we end up signing something with like the Y or someone else, I know that we always had to approve increases in rates for families that were sending their kids to Kids Club. Will we lose that ability? Like, could the costs skyrocket and us have no control?
It, we would be doing, it would be a vendor relationship.
Okay.
So there's limits to, to that, but the other side of that is they're, they're probably more concerned about a drop-off, a significant drop-off in attendance.
In numbers?
Yeah, than, than anything. They, they want, everything they've expressed to us and when they've done their site visits, they want to find a way to just make this sort of as seamless as possible. Doesn't mean there won't be changes that will impact parents and, you know, whomever, but they really are striving to make this as seamless as possible.
So we would lose that ability, but it would not suit them well to have costs there.
Correct. Why would we, wouldn't part of the agreement have to do with the cost? That, that's part of the evaluation.
Yes, the evaluation, and in the initial stages, yes.
Yeah. When you sign a vendor agreement, part of that vendor agreement you have. So the, I guess the, the, we could, we would want to create some, discuss some, some probably ranges, right? But the hypothetical there is something that, that, it's not even a hypothetical, it actually happened in the state of Massachusetts when, when sick days, it was required to pay sick days, that impacted transportation agreements. So, so if something like that happened and their costs went up, we couldn't, we would have to make sure that we couldn't, you know, limit their ability to run a program that was at least break even. So, yeah, but we could, we could put some language in there that provides some oversight. We have not signed an agreement in any way, shape.
I guess I just want to, that is a concern that I have because I wouldn't want to lose that control. Yeah, that's my concern.
Right, you want, you want to know what the cost, before you go into that, you want to know what the cost is going to be.
And I wouldn't want to have the cost be one thing the first year that we sign the contract, and then it could just be whatever the year after, and then suddenly our families can't afford it.
Right.
And I understand your point, I mean, they have an interest in serving a lot of kids and by being expensive, they might not be able to do that, but I still want to make sure that our families that truly need that care can afford it as best we can. And right now, we have the ability to vote for that.
Conversely, couldn't there also be a benefit of it of committing to like several years that they might be willing to commit at something that in year three might not have been what they would have got in year three, but because we're committing to three years, that's certain.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
They also have the ability to provide scholarships and they accept EEC vouchers. So we have been talking about cost and several issues, and we have not signed anything.
Okay.
Is there a need for them to do a presentation to the school committee?
They're, they're willing.
Very willing. We've talked about that.
Absolutely willing. There's been discussion, I know there's been site visits, and the discussion that I was involved with, I was very impressed with the Y. I think it could be a great, great thing for Falmouth, but I think a presentation of the school committee would be excellent.
We talked to them about that. I actually asked them if they'd be willing to do that, and they would, absolutely.
Excellent. I think in the interest of transparency, that would be a great idea.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Good suggestion. Any other questions for Patrick? Thank you, Patrick. I do not have any report from the chair, any reports from committee members? Any requests for follow-up information?
John? Request, the, the minutes from like the past, from 2016, there's a lot of gaps, I noticed, in years, prior years, it has like basically every meeting and all the minutes are there for every meeting. In 2016, there's probably maybe 40% if that of the minutes posted on the website. So I'd like to just get up to speed, you know, have them all on the website.
Which website?
The Falmouth Chamber website, the, the school committee website.
The school committee website.
Yeah, and the, I'm not sure if there's another site that hosts them too, in addition to that.
We send them to the town hall and they get posted.
Okay, well, there's a disconnect there a little bit because it's not on the school committee, the school committee website, you can look at like 2014, it has every single meeting, 2015, might have one or two gaps, 2016 has maybe 35, 40% of them on there and 65% of them, you know, not on.
The town has gone through a website transition, so there may be some, that may be.
But I think you're talking about the, the district's website.
So when you go to the school website and you click on minutes, it bumps you to the town.
We'll figure it out.
And then the other question also would be, just a point of information with, and maybe it's unrelated to us necessarily because it's a third party, but FCTV used to have the school committee, the prior meetings on their archive on demand, and now I know there's, it's, it's not really on FCTV. And then there's EduVision Falmouth, which did have them and now kind of doesn't. So basically, for, you know, anything, you know, just for, for transparency, anything over the 2016, if someone was going to look back at a school committee meeting over the last six months, they really, in likelihood, probably couldn't find it, which is, which is concerning. We just want to be, have that all out there for folks.
Thank you, John. Yeah, I think I noticed, I was on the school committee website the other day, and Ryan's going to, Ryan, just tell us something.
I can answer the question.
Okay.
EduVision, we switched over to YouTube because it provided automatic closed captioning. You can go to the Falmouth School Committee website and it will be linked right there. So all of those are still there, going back the whole year.
Okay, for the minutes or for the?
For the entire video of the meetings.
The video of the meetings, okay.
Yep, and it was town policy that we had to link to the agendas to their site. We're going through training actually in the transition, so I just need to take.
On the EduVision, is it, is it broken out that you can actually see? Because I went through there, I didn't really see where the school, and then I just did a search.
So no, EduVision isn't really there anymore, but you can get to the videos of the school committee meetings if you just go to the school committee website. The links now go to YouTube, YouTube videos instead.
Okay, great.
Are we going viral? Is that what that means?
We've gone viral.
We have gone viral, but the automatic closed captioning was like a really big component to why we had to switch.
Great, thank you, Ryan. Any other requests for follow-up information?
Just a comment. I get a little bit concerned now with the world of politics. And when I see the, the Secretary of Education, I get more concerned. And I look at where budget cuts could come up, I think of federal dollars into public education. And I know that people in this district are very astute and will look at that, but I think coming down the road, that has to be an ongoing evaluation because I'm concerned about the cuts that may or may not come. I would hope cooler heads prevail in the world of politics, but that does not always happen, that's a reality. So I would hope that funds are not cut federally in the long run, but I look at that and say, I don't know how much the government, the federal government really wants to be involved in public education. That's a real concern that I have at this point in time. So I throw that out there from my vast reservoir of semi-useless knowledge at times, but when I look down the road, I don't like what I see from the federal. I'm really concerned about that whole situation. Needed to bring that up.
Thank you, Bill. Any other further comments? Requests? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Sounds good.
Someone's not going to read something? No, okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
That must be the shortest.
That's just got to be the shortest meeting. We've pulled like 40 minutes.
44 minutes.